Glad to allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll start off with roll call. Dan Ratterhouse. John Estrich.
Here.
Bridget Hayes, I'm here. Curtis Ward.
Here.
Rick Whittaker.
Here.
We do have a call. Let's start off with the approval of the minutes from the executive session on September 3rd, 2024, and the regular meeting on September 3rd, 2024. Is there a motion to approve?
I'd make that motion.
John moved to approve both sessions. Is there a second?
A second.
Curtis seconded, all in favor. All opposed, motion carried. Next is the approval of claims and payroll. Claims is a total of $252,709.22. Is there a motion to approve?
I'd make that motion.
John made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
One second.
Rick seconded, all in favor. All opposed, motion carried. Next is the payroll. Payroll is $56,663.67 with $1,060.50 overtime. Is there a motion to approve?
I'd make that motion.
John made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
One second.
Curtis seconded, all in favor. All opposed, motion carried. First thing on the list is the FCN Bank parking request.
So FCN Bank is requesting two spots on the backside of Branca Street for October 1st, 2nd, and 3rd for their employee bonus visits. I think we first have someone sit back in the street.
Any questions about the parking request? Is there a motion to approve?
I'd make that motion.
John moved to approve FCN Bank and their parking request on October 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. Is there a second?
One second.
Rick seconded, all in favor. All opposed, motion carried. Next is Nixie's letter of support. So we have a letter of support for Nixie's to apply for their liquor licenses in the Brookfield Riverfront Development Project area. This is consistent with the other downtown Brookfield Riverfront Development liquor licenses that were signed in the past. Is there any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Curtis made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
John seconded, all in favor. All opposed, motion carried. Next is the Sportsplex design. So we have Lou Safka here from Triad Engineering to talk about the project itself.
Good evening. Let's hope my business goes as fast as the previous.
Can you press that little button to turn on the light? I think it's right in front.
There we go. Thank you. Lou Safka with Triad Associates where you're consulting engineers on the Sportsplex project. As you know, I think you guys have been somewhat up to speed as to the progress of things. We're basically going to put out for bid Phase 1, which is the eight pickleball courts, stands, the restroom, and so forth, but anything on the other side because of the occupancy of the salt barn and those silo that the counties will currently still run. We sent the advertisement for bids to the paper today, so it will run in Wednesday's paper. Plans and specifications will be finished and available on Friday, this coming Friday, and the intent is to receive sealed bids on Friday, October 18th, by 2:00 at the Town Hall, which point someone from our firm will be there to open and read those aloud, of course. We'll take them under advisement, do the abnormal bid certification and bid tab and so forth, with the intent of bringing contracts if everything goes well with a low bidder at your November meeting. So I think what we're after is concurrence by the council at this point.
November 4th meeting?
Yes. And here's a copy of the ad.
Oh, this is the third one to ship the bids. Do you, does anyone have any questions or do you want to know more about the project or have any questions about the project or?
He's wanting our approval by November 4th.
Of the, so I just, I asked Lou to come tonight because this council really hasn't heard a lot about this project. I have been intimately involved with the pickleball group and the fundraising with Shelley and so, I just wanted to make sure that you guys are on track, you had any questions you could ask him about the design, if you had any questions about the design, or he could tell you, you know.
What's the timetable on this? You've already requested bids, correct?
The bid, the advertisement for bids will run in the paper on Wednesday, and then we'll upload information about everything to a bid site called Quest, and we'll probably send out postcards and make phone calls to people that we know would be interested in such to try to get some, you know, as many competitive bids as we can, just like we did for the park parking lot project. So again, based on the advertisement that was just handed, bids are due October 18th. That's the day they turn them in, and they will be open and rail out at 2:00 that day or 2:01. But then, if everything goes well, our intent is to come back to you with contracts for the actual construction at your November 4th meeting. So that's really what I think everybody's looking for here, concurrence and blessing moving forward.
How many, of course, are proposed to this?
Eight.
And will it be light?
Yeah, the plans include lighting, fencing, storm range improvements.
Rick? Any questions?
Have we ever asked the neighbors in there? Have we ever asked the neighbors, what their opinion was, right along the fences that are out there with lights being on late at night or anything like that?
Um, no.
Think we should. At least keep their opinions everyone's going to live with. That's something we can do before we give them our blessings.
Uh, I mean, sure. I mean, I don't.
Prior to? Yeah. Prior to the board, the board, we did.
Okay. But we're still going to move forward with the advertisement?
Yeah, I'm thinking that prior to, at least let the neighbors have a say in something, what their opinion is going on.
Sure. Just so you're aware, the lights aren't a dusk to dawn feature. At dark, there'll be controls for those, so you manually have to turn them on and turn them off, just so it's not an all-night thing.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Do I need to put that on the next agenda for February?
For November 4th. November 4th.
I don't know what Rick was talking about.
Yes.
If they want to, or is he going to contact the neighbor personally?
I don't know. Can you contact the neighbors and ask them if they want to come to the next meeting?
Sure.
Okay, great, yes.
I just think they should, at least have an opinion about, since everyone is putting the noise, putting up the lights.
Thank you for contacting them. Um, next is, is, I think, maybe Shelley. That's okay. So I asked Shelley to come to talk about the funding and the fundraising that's been happening with the program.
Shelley works for the Franklin County Community Foundation, and basically just wanted to let you know that to date, the funding that has been, the town has contributed the money from ARPA, help, and then additional money is being raised, so we're up to $621,386.73. Today, this was as of Friday, I do know that today that at least $1,300 more came in to the foundation because we're holding the contributions in a pasture fund of the foundation.
And that includes the Freedom Spaces, Patronicity?
We had, yes, we had applied for a crowdfunding grant through ICA, it's called, it's on the website called Patronicity Creating Places, and that there will, we have met that match, and they will be providing, there's the ICA match, and then there's an AARP grant that comes with that as well. So they'll be providing $44,551 of that with that crowdfunding match and the AARP grant. Anything else?
That's wonderful, Shelley. Thank you so much for all you've done and to all the, all the people that have raised money on behalf of the town. I really appreciate your.
The pickleball group's been working really hard as well, so.
Yes, thank you very much. John, do you want to?
John, I can say one thing about the neighbors. We are concerned about the neighbors, and we are including an acoustic fencing along there. And we did do a decibel reading down there some time ago, and we found that the barking dog was far louder than a pickleball. So we're very willing to work with the neighbors.
Great, thank you. And last but not least, Bill Schummer here from SEI Ready has some news for us. Potential news?
So Bill Schummer with SEI Ready. So dealing with the grants and the grant programs with Ready 1.0, some of you are familiar, you're probably all familiar with all that planned out, and then Ready 2.0 is coming into play. The projects needed to be submitted maybe 60 days ago, I guess, for 2.0, and the SEI Ready went over them last Monday to analyze, there were 17 projects submitted. And one of those, and basically, we have scored them all, and then from the scoring, we have decided that there, there's going to have to be some cuts, and I say that only because we only were awarded 10 million in our region, and there's some really good projects, there's some projects that were asking for 3.7 million that were knocked down to 2, for instance. But, so what we're trying to do is come back to this board, because this, there was a request to help with the Sportsplex pickleball courts for 200, the ask was for $226,900. And our board is willing to earmark and move forward a number of 200,000. And so what I'm here tonight is to ask the board if they want us to continue to pursue that, then I would go back to my board and meet with them and let them know that there are all these projects that we earmarked allocating funds for, and this particular project we're allocating 200,000, don't mean you get it, it just means you get to move on down the line. So if there's an interest in pursuing it, I'll take that back to my board, and if there's not an interest in it, that's, that's it. So I guess really what I'm going to, what I'm asking for is the board to make a motion to pursue it or not to pursue it.
How much did you say you funded, Shelley? 600?
We raised, or so far, there is $621,386,000. That's mainly for, we've got a recommended phase, it's Phase 1A, is the pickleball courts themselves. What Bill is referring to is Phase 1B, which is the restrooms, and then we have to wait on the rest of it because of the salt.
What's the, what's the total projected cost?
Six oh four.
Six oh four.
Six oh four.
Third one?
One A.
What about the second one?
Two thirty.
I mean, can you raise that much, Shelley?
Six twenty-one, well, six, let's see, what came in today? About six twenty-three.
So we're a little over on that.
I think it makes sense.
As long as the bids come in. As long as the bids come in.
So that's nineteen that we have for the third, 26 that we need, so we only really shooting seven at this point, but there's still fundraising.
And redevelopment, we used to get a set today, tonight, and we haven't set a figure, but redevelopment, they probably can talk to you.
That'll help with some, that'll help in the logistics of having the government, you know, government input and private input and all that kind of stuff, it'll make the equation work that much, and that's usually what will occur, is that our grant administrator will come back and say, can you redefine these numbers, or can you, you know, and we'll work that back and forth, and then it goes before IEDC and the economic development will look at it, and then they will be the one to make that award. In Ready 1.0, it was pretty simple. In Ready 2.0, they may say, we're going to show up, we want to see this, it's kind of, they're getting a little more, I won't say they're getting particular, but they're analyzing it a little bit differently than they did before, and, but I thought that it was impressive to get 200 of 226, so.
So this just means that Ready will submit this as part of all their other projects to IEDC, and IEDC is the final approval?
So of the, about 9.1 or 9.7 million dollars that we're going to be spending, this is factored in, we spent 7.7 million dollars last Monday morning, or earmarked it. We sent one project through because they needed, they needed some credits, and they needed to get these things moved forward, it was actually in Greendale, and that's where that project was at, and, and so this will come back to our October meeting, and I'll say that you guys were in favor of continuing to pursue it, and that we'd like to see it pushed on along. And then it goes to the next level or to the next step, that's not a promise, but.
So do you need a motion, or do you need a letter, or do you need anything besides the motion?
As long as your minutes reflect that there was a motion made, I mean, I think that satisfies in my group, as far as if there was simply a motion that just simply says that we want you to, you know, go ahead and pursue the 200,000. It's a reduction of what you asked for, you asked for 226.
I'd make that motion.
Curtis made a motion to.
Pursue the.
Pursue SEI Ready's 200,000 for Ready 2.0 for the Sportsplex Phase 1A, or, sorry, Phase 1B.
That's the second name.
John seconded, all in favor. All opposed, motion carried. Thanks, Lou. Thanks for all.
Good luck, good luck with that.
Pickleball guys, thanks for all the things you guys have been doing, you've been doing a great job, appreciate it. Thanks, Lou, for coming. Now. Next is new business, Caitlin Sturwitz for the Area Planning Commission.
Hi, so I want to just be clear that I'm representing my interpretation and my opinion. I haven't brought this to my board yet, so I don't want to speak for them when I haven't talked to them about it yet, but a little while back, Bridgette called me and asked me if the new gun store in town needed a permit, and she informed me that it used to be a gun store, correct? And so I said, no, it's a gun store, it was a gun store, now it's a new gun store with the same owner, same people. I don't see why they would need a permit, in my interpretation, in my opinion.
So that, so that you, I'm having trouble here.
So a little while back, Bridgette has called me and asked me if the gun store in town needed a permit, and she informed me that it used to be a gun store in the past, and it's the same owners and the same people. So I told her I didn't see, I don't think they would need a permit for that. A complaint has come in now from the neighbor stating that they don't agree with my decision, so in the event it does go before my board, I'd like to know if you guys support that decision, if it's something you agree with, did you think they needed a permit?
We don't actually require permits in the town, business permits in the town of Brookville, so, I mean, I'm not sure.
Are they doing any modeling?
We haven't, you know, I mean, he built a, it's not a wall, it's not structural, but he built like an enclosure that has a thing that comes down, locks at the bottom, so that it can't be, I mean, I'm sure if you had a tank, you could get through with the, you know, with the security locks, I don't know what the standards are, but it does look a lot more secure in that little corner than the rest of the, of the business, so that's kind of, I just saw it, so.
What did the complaint say? What, what they, what part of this are they against?
Before I say that, let me just start out with, it's zoned properly, and all the zoning code requires when they do have a class three hearing for firearm sales is that they're federally regulated, which they are, and they provided proof of that in documentation, so.
Is class three moved by, is that?
That's a conditional use.
Is that approved by you?
That's approved by the board. If it's a class two, it's approved by me, but considering it was an existing gun store.
We don't have a change of use or like a.
Well, that's what I always suggested, Bridgette, a change of use, but that's what it was before, so.
Right. If there was a change of use, or there's provision, if you stop doing it for X amount of time, then it would go away, I can see needing it, but I'm confused if it was already a gun store before and they're already regulated.
And it's the same owners, so it's not, it's not a new owner, same spot, same owner. The complaint, your question before, I haven't read through it entirely, it was actually like five pages of, I think photos and stuff, but the gist of the complaint was, they're concerned it's a safety issue because they said it was sharing a wall with their children. I don't see how that's possible after visiting the actual store, because the house is in the front, kind of close to where the washers and dryers are being sold, and the guns are in the back, and there's a block wall in an alley between that, so.
I mean, I personally don't have any issue with it, I just don't know how the town council has any, has any authority to, I mean, we don't really have any authority to speak on this, I mean.
If, if the owners insulted it with somebody else, and that person wanted to put in a gun store, would there be some type of permit they would have to get?
At this point, in the future, I'm going to require a permit, just because this is so gray now that I'm, I don't know if I messed up or what I did.
No, no, so what I'm saying, so I mean, there's the federal permits and stuff, of course, that they have to go through to be able to have a gun store, but in, in as Bridgette stated, we don't have any that the town knows, but is there something the complaint commission would have to approve, if somebody do was doing?
So let's say you opened one right now, and we would, and it was in town, we would ask for the, the board's approval, or ask at least how you felt about it, and then I would show that to my board, and it would go through a class three conditional use, and they would make sure that it's zoned properly and that it's following all the federal regulations. It's just the only requirements that are listed on there.
So in, in this world, your world, it's, what we run into is, they're called pre-existing non-performing uses, and you're allowed to continue with your pre-existing non-performing use, but if you stop using it for that purpose, and it's one of those, there's no set time, it's, and then you determine that amount of time, and then you lose that ability to say, well, it's pre-existing non-performing use, so that would be my only concern, is how long are you going to be able to, you know, gun shop it, but you said it's zoned properly, and they have their federal stuff.
I have no problems myself.
I mean, I don't either, sure.
Is there any way I could get some form of letter or email?
You want a motion?
That would be wonderful.
Okay, I'd make a motion to, how would you put that?
That we don't oppose it?
That we don't oppose the gun shop hitting that.
And support your previous decision?
Yeah.
John made a motion that we do not oppose the gun shop in the Triarmont, and that we support your previous decision.
Also.
Is there, Curtis seconded, all in favor? All opposed, motion carried.
Alright, thanks, Bridgette.
Thanks, guys. Next is ADA sidewalk quotes for 7th Street on Franklin Avenue and Market Street.
I still have not received that second one, I'm sorry, probably shouldn't have moved that, so you can go ahead and skip that.
Table. Next is the Historic Preservation Commission nomination. Who are our applicants?
So I believe just two have resigned, so there were, I didn't receive two, like three applicants. One was Jacqueline Greer, Patricia Lorme, and Christie Saxon, and they each wrote, I don't know, did I, did you get those in your packets or email?
Yes. Does the council want to vote, or does the council want to send us to the HPC and see what they think?
Yeah.
To do, interview them and provide us a recommendation? Would that be? Okay, can you?
I'd make a motion, we send this to the HPC, and they interview all three of these candidates, and they send us a recommendation.
John made a motion to send back to the HPC, is there a second?
Second.
Curtis seconded, all in favor? All opposed, motion carried. Next is trick or treat. Usually we do trick or treat on December 31st.
October.
I'm just waiting for this year to be over, John, I'm sorry. October 31st, which is Thursday. Was that from 6 to 8, Gina? Is there a motion to continue that tradition this year?
I'd make that motion.
John made a motion, Curtis seconded, all in favor. All opposed, motion carried. Is that, is that all you needed, Gina, for that? Pretty easy. Next is the budget hearing. Should we, I'd like to open the public hearing for the budget, 2020 part budget.
I'd second.
I'd like to invite anybody from the public who'd like to make a statement or ask any questions. Seeing no statement, I'd like to close the budget hearing.
Motion closed.
Motion closed. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed, motion carried. Budget meeting, my budget hearing is closed. Now, do we vote?
There's, I mean, this is basically just for them to ask questions and have an opportunity to.
So.
So if you guys want to discuss something or change anything, you can, because you won't formally adopt until the 12th. Just remember, whatever you have published, you can't go higher than the vote.
So just for anybody watching, there's nobody in the audience, so that's why we don't have any public comments for this public hearing. Would anyone want to discuss what was advertised or anything about the budget? Seeing nothing, I guess we'll move on. Oh, that's it for the regular meeting, besides just one announcement. We received a letter from OPR, the Indiana Office of Community Rule Affairs, and basically it is a letter that says a token of appreciation from Indiana Main Street, and it's to our own Main Street Brookville. And it just kind of highlights all the things that they've done and how thankful OPR is to Main Street Brookville for everything, including they, they outlined attending the Main Street Conference this year, which I think Christine gained a wealth of knowledge, and also they held a girls' weekend event to incentivize shopping downtown, which is great. It also looks like Main Street Brookville, our, the services offered through our state are valued at $598,000 for both Indiana accredited and nationally accredited Main Street organizations, and Brookville Main Street has had 7,600 invested by Indiana Main Street so far this year. So this is just kind of a kudos to them and them saying, great job. So I just wanted to share it with the council and whoever's listening. So great job, Main Street Brookville, thank you. If there's no other business?
I, oh, business.
Sorry.
The police may be in the building, the new building, by middle of October. Terry would like to have permission to start buying furniture. We have the money that we saved from buying the two used cars, and we, at that time earmarked that money for the furniture, and I'd just like to give Terry permission to go in.
Does he have that? Does he have like invoices or estimates or anything?
No, he's just wanting to go ahead and find some furniture.
I, I have actually used some of that public safety also to cover some other expenses that they have. So I would probably like to get with them and-
That'd be fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, don't we, doesn't he get the invoice and ready to us and then we approve it?
Well, I think so, but I think he wants to start picking furniture out. I think that-
He can do that anytime. I mean, it's just getting quotes, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think he is.
Now, do you, do you want to find out how much money he has to spend and plan how to spend shares or bring it up?
I mean, it would be, I mean, Gina, if you want to share with him by any chance that information that we learned from Sourcewell?
Oh, yeah.
About the office furniture that, um, if, if he gets it from one of the companies on the Sourcewell contract, that it's a huge possibility that it'll, it's a negotiated rate, so it'll be produced. It's not as easy as going to Amazon and seeing a picture and seeing the cost and hitting add to cart. It's a little bit more to, to look into it and call the rep and get some quotes like that. But it does save some money, so, um, if you can share that with-
Contact information, maybe Patty and Brooklyn and-
Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, any discounts we can get, this furniture is pricey. Is there anybody, any other council member that has anything else? Anybody else? No? No other business come forward? I'll enter a motion to adjourn.
Make that a motion.
John motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Curtis seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you all for coming.